Mr. Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we revert back to motions for the purposes of bringing Bill 79, Bill 48, and Bill -- no, not 48, I'm sorry. Bill 79 and Bill 25 for an amendment, as well as the placement of Bill 107, 108, 109, and 110. And I would read the titles when we get to the motions filed.
Okay. On the motion, no objections. So ordered. Senator, you may continue.
Thank you. So I move that we bring Bill 79 from the third reading file to the top of the second reading file. This is the bill. This is Vice Speaker Cruz's bill relative to creating a category of privileged communications between victim and victim advocate. And there, we have to move this back to the second reading file so the Vice Speaker can move an amendment to codify this in law.
Okay. On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you. I move that we bring Bill 25 back to the top of the second reading file. And it's a bill introduced by Senator Torres. And it's relative to the voter registration, tying that to the Department of Revenue and Taxations Guam Driver's License. And Senator Torres wants to present to the body an amendment to this bill that will tie the closing and opening of registration pursuant to Guam Code and subject the prohibition on transfer of registration between primary and general election. So this, although it's extremely unnecessary that this be added to our bill, it cannot be treated as a technical amendment, so we have to do it this way.
On the motion, no objections. So ordered.
Thank you. So I move that we now place Bill 107, 108, 109, and 110. And all of these bills are incorporated into Bill 82-33 and 83-33, all sponsored by Senator Barnes, Senator Tony Ada, and Senator Frank Glass Jr. And it's all relative to the use of the tourist attraction fund for those purposes highlighted in Bills 82 and 83. Yesterday's discussion, there was desire by the body to have these bills broken up into individual appropriations. And so what Senator Barnes has done is she's taken the committee reports for Bills 82 and 83, Madam Speaker and colleagues, and she's actually rerouted another voting sheet, attaching the public hearing on those two bills to these four bills. And so then it qualifies for the placement at the second reading file. Bill 107 is an act to appropriate funds from the fiscal year 2014 fund balance of the TAF to the Guam Police Department for overtime compensation. Bill 108 is an act to appropriate funds from the same source to the Guam Department of Corrections for overtime compensation. Bill 109 is to appropriate funds from the Hotel OXP Tax Surplus Fund to the Guam Business Bureau. And then 110 is to appropriate funds from that same source to the Hagania Restoration and Redevelopment Authority for operational needs.
Thanks, Senators. Senators, on the motion, no objections. So ordered.
Thank you. So I then moved that we go back to the second reading.
Say on the motion to go back to the second reading, without any objections. So ordered. Mr. Vice Speaker, you recognize on Bill 79.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I apologize to the body for having to bring this back up, but I'd like to move that Bill 79-33, as substituted by the Committee on Guam U.S. Military Relocation, Public Safety, and Judiciary, further substituted by the author on the floor, and further substituted again by the author on the floor. Madam Speaker, yesterday when I spoke on the bill, I made mention that I wanted the compiler to -- the first section was to authorize the compiler to codify it into the evidentiary rules, rules of evidence. After session yesterday, legal counsel approached me and offered to codify it for us. And she has given numbers to all of the sections. It's all the same thing. It's just actually giving it code numbers rather than leaving it for the compiler of law to put numbers to it. Our legal counsel graciously offered to do that and has done so. And so I ask that we vote on this, further substituted by myself on the floor with the actual code sections in the rules of evidence.
Okay. On the motion? Is there anybody who would like to speak on it? There being none, so Mr. Vice Speaker.
Please, if it be sent it down into the voting file. I'd appreciate it. And again, I thank you for your indulgence.
On the motion then to send 79-33 to the third reading file, without any objections, so ordered. Senator Torres, you're recognized on 2533.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to, with regard to Bill number 25-33, this is a bill that was amended by the Committee on Rules, Federal Foreign and Myfianian Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, Election Reform and Capital District. Madam Speaker, what I'd like to do is, when we initially discussed this bill, I overlooked one of the recommendations that was brought forth to us during the public hearing. I'm sorry. Thank you. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that we place Bill number 25-33 into the third reading file. And if I may discuss the bill, please.
Yes, Senator, and you may proceed.
Okay. Bill number 25-33 is an act to add a new subsection 3101.3 to Article 1 of Chapter 3, Title 16, Guam Code Annotated, relative to enabling the registration of eligible voters incident to obtaining a Guam motor vehicle driver's license or identification card. This bill essentially allows a person who's applying for a driver's license or Guam ID or renewing a driver's license or Guam ID to register to vote pursuant to Title III GCA. And it also allows an applicant to, if they're a previously registered voter, to change their address for voting purposes. And as I started to mention, there was one recommendation made by the legal counsel of the Guam Election Commission to make sure that we tied in the opening and registration restrictions and the transfer registration timing restrictions into this bill. And at the time that we reported out of committee, it was an oversight. So I thank legal counsel from the legislature for pointing that out. And so I'd like to propose an amendment, Madam Speaker. On page 1 of Bill 25-33, line 11, I'd like to add to the end of subsection A, line 11, it reads, "If previously registered to change their address for voting purposes, comma, subject to the closing and opening of registration pursuant to III GCA 3104, and subject to the prohibition on transfer of registration between primary and general election pursuant to III GCA 3107." Essentially, it just makes it very clear what the parameters of being able to transfer residence and changing addresses and that sort of thing. Thank you.
And we'll come on the amendment. Does anyone who would like to speak on the amendment? There being none, so ordered. So on the motion then to send 25-33 back to the third reading file, no objections. So ordered. Thank you, Senators. Senator Munia Barnes on Bill 82-33.
Madam Speaker, I may, if I can move Bill 82-33-COR as amended by the Committee on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing, Historic Preservation, and further substituted on the floor.
Yes.
To, I guess, to accept.
To accept, yes. So on the motion to accept, no objections. So ordered. You may continue.
Again, Madam Speaker, thank you for accepting this Bill 82. At the request of this august body, we took both bills on 82 and 83.
Motion to.
Oh, I'm sorry. The motion to place it on third reading, and if I can briefly talk about it again and continue our conversation from last.
You may proceed, Senator.
Thank you. So, Madam Speaker, what we did was we took Bill 82-33-COR and separated it into three bills so that we can break down the funding sources for each program needed. So 82 will be the, from the $4 million, $2 million is hereby appropriated from the unallocated fund balance for fiscal year 2014 to fund the Guam Business Bureau for the deposit into the Guam Festback and Folklife Festival Trust account in the amount of $2 million.
Okay. Thank you. Senators, on the motion, no objections. No one who would like to speak on it? So on the motion then to send 82-33 to the third reading file, without any objections. So ordered. Senator, on your next bill.
Thank you. Bill number 107-33 LS, Madam Speaker, is a continuation. And out of that $4 million, 1.201011, oh, so move to accept first.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
The amount of 1.201011.
For that one?
Yes.
That's already on the agenda, so can you just.
Right. So I move to the third, right? And then you said to go ahead and speak, right?
Yes.
So out of the $4 million, 1.201011 is hereby appropriated to the Guam Police Department for overtime compensation accrued through May 12, 2015.
So on the motion, Senator Tomada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I certainly rise in support of the measure here. However, I do have a question. On line 12, it reads that this appropriation shall continue to be available until expended. Now, it seems to me that we've already identified how much is needed to be paid in outstanding overtime payments, and it's just a matter of money being made available. And so, you know, if it's going to take till the next fiscal year for this thing to get paid, then something's wrong. And so I propose then that on line 12, that we strike the words "shall continue to be available until expended." I just can't fathom why it is that we would go beyond this fiscal year to make good on these overtime payments.
Senator, do you hear to the question?
Yes, I do. I was just going to ask the good senator if he can keep the show and just delete, continue to spend it so that it would read, "This appropriation is not subject to the transfer or use for any other purpose," so that we know that the 1.201 will be allocated for that overtime payment to GPD.
So can you, Senator then, Senator Tomada, you want to make the amendment?
So no, no, no. So my amendment, I'm sorry. So my amendment then is that line 12 will read, "This appropriation, strike out the words 'shall continue to be available until expended' and," cross all that out, and so it would read, "This appropriation is not subject to transfer or use for any other purpose."
No objection. Okay. So on the amendment, no objections. So ordered. Any other discussion? Senator Espoada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I appreciate what this bill intends to do because our Guam police definitely have been waiting for their overtime compensation. However, I just rise to perhaps remind this body to be very cautious how we go about appropriating funds. I mean, this is the tourist attraction fund, and I realize we're all one government, but if you look at the code of the tourist attraction fund, there are specific uses for it. And I just have to be able to voice this right now because I know there were voices within the tourism sector of our economy who actually raised the issue that, again, be very careful because these funds are supposed to be dedicated for the development of tourism on our island. And again, the argument can be made that by providing the overtime compensation to the police officers who are owed, that our island becomes a safer place, which becomes a lot more attractive for tourists because they enjoy that sense of security to come to a destination that is safe for them and their families. And that's why I do not object to this at all. I just rise to caution us going forward that when we start looking at various funds, funds are created, special funds are created normally for special purposes. And again, I just want to rise to make note of that. In this situation, I support this because, like I said, in the bigger picture, this will make our island a safer place and, again, will be part of the draw for tourists to come to our island. But again, as a cautionary note, I have to at least say that. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. And the motion, the main motion, does anyone like to speak to it? There being none, so the motion to send 107-33 to the third reading file, without any objections. Okay, Senator Uggan.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly stand in support of this particular legislation and addressing an overtime issue with the Guam Police Department. Just for the information of the body, there was approximately $1.1 million that was allocated out of the general fund, incorporated into the Guam Police Department's budget for this fiscal year. As of February, or I believe mid-March, that particular threshold had already been reached. So this appropriation of $1.2 million for overtime compensation accrued through May 12, 2015, if that would be all-inclusive of all the overtime from October 1st through May 12, then I just want to state that that 1.1 that is in the budget out of the general fund should still, based on, I hope the Chairman of Appropriations perhaps may want to add comment to this, would still otherwise be made available within the Guam Police Department's budget for the balance of the fiscal year. So 1.1 budgeted out of the general fund plus 1.2 would accrue to a total for the entire fiscal year allocated out of this body for the Guam Police Department overtime of approximately $2.2 million. And that's around the threshold that the Guam Police Department has traditionally expended in overtime over the course of the past several years. So I commend the sponsor for presenting this funding source to take care of this outstanding obligation. And we certainly will continue to work with the Guam Police Department as well as the Governor's Office to ensure that the allocated and appropriated amounts out of the general fund will take care of subsequent obligations that are accrued over the course of the balance of this fiscal year. So I stand in support of this legislation, just acknowledging that, yes, this body had already provided $1.1 million in this fiscal year, and this would add to that particular amount to add up to 2.2, which is indeed, is definitely needed by the department and our police officers out there. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Welcome, Senator. On the motion, Mr. Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. At a public hearing, GPD admitted that they'd already accrued more than $1.1 million. So maybe it might help if we just dropped the date there and just accrued in FY15. Why does it have to stop at May 12? So it would be clear that both the 1.1 and the 1.2 are going to be used for FY15. And what I think we're trying to, are concerned about is that if we put this date in, that they might be able to not use the 1.1 that's there and use it for other things. And I'm just saying, make it so that GPD has 2.3 for FY15 and not necessarily just to May 12, 2016, 2015.
Please remit payment to LEA. Okay. Mr. Vice Speaker is indicating that there might, that maybe the best to indicate that it should be for fiscal year 15 rather than the set date. So you're proposing that as an amendment then?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So on the amendment, I'm sure Senator Ada, you might, since you brought, are you okay with that, Senator Ada? Okay. So it would be overtime compensation accrued, well, I guess, in fiscal year 15. Is that correct, Mr. Vice Speaker? Time out. Okay. Recession. The legislature's back in session. On the amendment, which will be on line 10, to then delete through May 12, 2015, and place with, be accrued for fiscal year 15. Is that correct, Mr. Vice Speaker? Okay. So on the amendment, no objections. So ordered. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on the main motion? There being none on the motion then to send 107-33 to the third reading file, without any objections. So ordered. Senator, on 108, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move that Bill 108-33 LS, we move to the third reading, if I can speak on it.
Yes, you may continue.
Madam Speaker, Bill 108-33 takes the $798,989 from the unappropriated, unallocated fund balance from the fiscal year 2014 tourist attraction fund, which would go to the Department of Corrections for the overtime compensation, and then accrue through May 12, 2015.
On that motion, and I'm sure that the same amendment, Senator Ada and Mr. Vice Speaker, you would like to see also in this language?
Would that be a technical?
So that's.
Oh, yeah. No, on the motion then.
Okay. So Senator, you want to go ahead and do it then, since you know what it is?
Right. So the first one would delete, shall, all the way up to and.
Okay. On that motion then to delete on line 12 and 13, shall continue to be available until expended, and, no objections. So ordered. And the second.
And then on line.
10.
10.
For accrued.
Accrued.
To 12.
To 12.
And then place where for fiscal year 15.
Overtime compensation.
For fiscal year 15.
For fiscal year 2015.
Yes. Okay. On that amendment, no objections. So ordered. On the motion to place 108-33 to the third reading file, without, Senator Uggan?
This is my, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I too, again, on this particular legislation, regardless as to the funding source, recognizes an obligation that the government of Guam continues to accrue as it applies to a public safety agency. So I stand in full support of the allocation of these particular resources in recognition that overtime, based on information that is gathered and shared with us on Tuesday night, upcoming Tuesday night's oversight hearing over the agency, in anticipation of perhaps an increased requirement for the foreseeable near future, I certainly stand in full support of this particular appropriation and allowing our correction officers to get the overtime that is due to that. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator Espoada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And this is just to reiterate my caution to the body as well, one more time, that whenever we take money out of a dedicated fund that has specific purposes in law of what it should be used for, that we should pause. Again, I will, I support this measure because of the overtime, and again, it concerns a public safety issue. However, if we're going to keep going down this road and try to fund the public safety, because again, the same argument applies, that the safer the island is, the more attractive it is as a destination, then perhaps we should take a look at amending the law that created the tourist attraction fund and that specifies the purposes for which the fund can be used for. Again, I just rise one more time to caution the body that when we create special funds, they are for special purposes. In this case, again, because of the public safety issue, I will support this. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. So on the motion to send, oh, Senator McCready. Got to be quick.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm trying to be as quick as you, but that's, I rise in full support of this piece of legislation and the others, but I do hear both sides. And I just want to caution the body that the Department of Corrections is facing a shortfall in manpower now. We have nine officers that have been put on admin leave, and I'm not sure if that's the entire amount of officers that will be put on leave. So I do think when you talk about the overtime, this $798,000 goes to paid overtime that we've already incurred. Moving forward, we know that right now guards are working 12-hour shifts, so there's going to be overtime in the future. We also know that the financial problems with the Department of Corrections to get out a consent decree is going to cost us millions of dollars as well. It already costs us millions of dollars. It's going to cost us even more. And then we have federal contracts that the Department of Corrections, I think, are six to eight months behind in receiving some allocations from that as well. So there's a lot of issues facing the Department of Corrections as we look forward when we talk about fiscal problems. So this takes care of the current problem, but I want to caution the body that the Department of Corrections is going to need more money for overtime. And it's kind of like the good vice speaker did a year and a half ago, whereas he appropriated more money for overtime, and we didn't do it, and now we're paying for it. So I just want to make sure that we acknowledge that there's going to be a shortfall in overtime for the Department of Corrections. How much, I don't know, but I think there should be some kind of lockbox or some kind of mechanism that we keep some savings in one of our accounts so that we can then pay those overtimes and pay those issues that's going to occur, that we know is going to happen. But I do support this measure, and I hope that the body can find a way to keep some money locked up somewhere so we can pay this incurring debt that's going to happen. Thank you.
Duly noted, Senator. And if you can find a way to really. And if you can find a way to really lock it, then we'll definitely support you. But I do know that we do have a rainy day fund and it's been raining, but you know, there's no money in it, it's dry, the box is dry. So on the motion then to send one oh eight dash thirty-three to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Senator, you're recognized on eighty-three dash thirty-three.
So Madam Speaker, thank you again. If I could please move, no, can I please move to accept bill number eighty-three, eighty-three dash thirty-three C.O.R. as amended by the Committee on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing and Historic Reservation and then further substituted on the floor to accept?
On, on that motion without any objection, so ordered to place.
And then Madam Speaker, can I please place it on the third reading and if I can briefly speak about it?
Yes, Senator, may proceed.
Madam Speaker, bill number eighty-three dash thirty-three is an act to appropriate the funds from the fiscal year two thousand fourteen hotel occupancy tax hot surplus fund for the payment of capital needs of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority. I want to share with you first, Madam Speaker, that on our, in public law thirty-two dash zero six eight, which was our budget bill, chapter ten, section seventeen of that public law created the hotel occupancy tax surplus fund which we created last term. What this, what this provision of law does, Madam Speaker, is it did require the BBMR to create a twelve month budget based on the tourist attraction fund revenue estimated. That was adopted in, in the budget bill. And this section further required that all quarterly revenues that were collected that were in excess of the budgeted amount created by BBMR would be placed into a special account called the hotel occupancy tax surplus fund. And then according to the letters received from Department of Administration, that amount in that account was a little over three point five million dollars. And off that, Madam Speaker, we, we did do a breakdown and I will speak about the two other measures. I want to note that one point six of that is for the computer, I mean, for the purchase of a computerized axel tomography, which is the CAT scan and related supplies to go to this, one point six would go to this program. As you are aware, Madam Speaker, RTAF is here to promote visitor satisfaction with Guam as a tourist destination and I want to share with you that as we look at our growth and our maintenance of our visitor industry, we have to also ensure that our, our only government hospital has some of the necessary equipment that is needed to help in the basic tools of diagnosing the patients that go through there. And we do have a lot of tourists that go in there and we certainly want to help with our visitor satisfaction as our island is one of the, I'd like to say, more favorable destinations and helping our only government hospital achieve this to help our, our patients, our tourists that come through there, this is one way of showing that commitment. And I understand the concerns of our, our previous speakers that spoke about the concern of utilizing the TAF and the surplus fund, but it's important that we also think of providing that, that quality support for those who come through our doors at the hospital. So this was one way of showing that support, Madam Speaker.
Okay. On the motion, I have Senator Tom Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, you know, yesterday when I had raised a concern that in looking at the committee report, unlike the previous bill eighty-two, in the, in that committee, in the committee report for that bill, there was in fact a submittal from the Department of Administration actually outlining in black and white how much was in the, in that case, the, the account of the hotel or the tourist attraction fund. And, you know, started out with the amount of four million dollars and then showed basically the allocations that the bill was asking for. But in the case of bill eighty-three dash thirty-three, as I was looking at the committee report, I did not see a similar report. And so I raised that concern and I, I would just ask, do we have that report?
Senator, you, you to the question?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I will answer the question to the good Senator from Manila. It was submitted on April twenty-first. It wasn't in the report yesterday, but we submitted it in the report today. So it should be there.
So could we have a copy of that?
Yes, definitely. I will ask if it's not there right now.
Can we take a brief recess and so can have it, copies made? Thank you.
And maybe, okay.
The legislature is back in session. On the motion, Senator Tom Adat, we left with you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I want to say thank you to the author for having provided the information I was asking for, and I'm satisfied that having received this information from the Director of Administration, I'm satisfied that the amount is in fact there, and so I have no further questions. Thank you.
You're welcome. Senator, Mr. Vice Speaker, you're recognized on the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, first, I just want to address the source of the funds. This Hotel Occupancy Tax Surplus Fund was created after I had asked the Office of Public Accountability to conduct a study. You may remember a couple of years ago when my office released some information that they had received that a number of hotels had not been paying their hotel occupancy tax into the Tourist Attraction Fund. Members of GBB, management scoffed and told me that I was wrong, that everybody was up to date. Well, I'm very glad that today we have the report that says that $3.5 million was actually not paid over the period. And I want to remind the body that when we created this surplus fund, it was created for the specific purpose of paying everything over to the FESPAC. I'm not going to rise in opposition to this bill. I would probably be pilloried, or worse yet, drawn and courted if I opposed having a CAT scan for the hospital. So I'm just saying, just because we know we have the money, doesn't mean we have to run out and spend all of it. I'm not in opposition to a CAT scan machine at the hospital, though they broke the last one that they had that was barely in use. But they need something. I know that, because they're having to cart the people out of the hospital to take them to another facility to get CAT scans. So I can't oppose it. I'm just hoping that they learn how to use it and not blow it up within weeks. I'm sorry. But I'm not going to oppose the purchase of it, because it is imperative that the community has it. That was not the intent of this fund, but again, I will not oppose it. I may oppose one of the later bills, but I cannot get up in good conscience and say that I oppose the purchase of a CAT scan. But I just want to remind everybody that that surplus fund was created to put money aside for FESPAC. We appropriated it for '82, but as you may know, we're still probably short $3 or $4 million in raising money for FESPAC, and this may be it, but we're spending it now. And when I was still on FESPAC, it was for the specific purpose of FESPAC that I created this fund and got the support of the legislature to do it. But I can't oppose a CAT scan machine.
On the motion? And I just want to make sure that the senators, that, you know, the language in which you've made some of their amendments before, that you're still okay with it, right? Senator Spalding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And again, I don't want to belabor the point, but I rise to basically support the statements of the previous speaker, in that we should be very careful how we're using our funds. Even in our household, when we put aside X amount of dollars, perhaps in my case, you know, every month, there's a certain pot that specifically goes to my daughter who's in college. It's not a lot of money, but it's set aside for her so that she'll be able to survive and be able to flourish in her pursuit of her education. If I decide to take that money because there's something else out there, then my daughter suffers. In this situation, the analogy is that in this situation, again, there's still so many more things we can do to improve our island, to improve our product as a destination. It is the economic engine of our island, tourism, aside from military. And again, I just need to make sure we understand that even with the creation of this fund, really, this is hotel occupancy taxes that is supposedly supposed to go into the Tourist Attraction Fund, which is supposed to be used for the improvement of our island product for tourism, to be able to attract tourism. And included in that TAF spending includes the ability to put in roads, includes the ability to beautify, includes the ability to set up, put in sports facilities around our island, and so forth and so forth, right? And that is within the law. And again, we know that there are shortfalls there, and yet every time we come to a certain point, you know, those needs go unaddressed, and then we take the money and use it for other purposes. So in essence, our daughter is not getting the funds that she really could use, and that's for the Tourist Attraction Fund. So again, I just rise in caution also, to caution my colleagues here, as we go on forward, right, to make sure we understand what we're really doing in the bigger scheme of things. Because if we keep creating these special funds one more time for specific purposes, and then raid these funds for a whole different set of purposes, then we defeat the purpose of what the funds were created for. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. So on the motion then to send, unless anybody wants to speak, Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I think, Madam Speaker, and I appreciate and I recognize, and I have to agree with the previous speakers as well, but, you know, one of the main reasons why I, you know, I co-sponsored the legislation, and yes, you know, it's very difficult to be able to sometimes take, you know, from the areas, the savings areas, or to be able to fund other things. But however, you know, especially with the need to be able to provide the CAT scan for the hospital. It was a difficult decision on my part, on whether or not, you know, it can be done in this fashion, but I think the decision was made primarily, and because there was this urgency, and there was an urgency to be able to get this. And it is an urgency. When you have a, when you have a patient who would benefit from this technology, so that they can get the treatment that's necessary, so they get the diagnosis, actually, that's necessary, and maybe help to reduce the amount of money that they're going to need, because absent of the CAT scan, they may have, would have to have gone off-island to be able to get this. Absent the CAT scan, they would not have gotten the diagnosis and the proper diagnosis and would have been in a worse health condition than they are. And while I agree that, you know, we've got to be very, that we have to be careful with how we spend the funds, I think that this is one of those areas where it was, I don't want to say we didn't have a choice, because we do, but at this point in time, this was the best decision to be made on the way the money was to be spent, is to be spent. So I need to be able to voice that, see the necessity for it, and, you know, if we're able to be able to do this and get it, so that we can help save somebody's life, then let's do this. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion? On the motion then to send 83-33 to the third reading file without any objections ordered. Senator Munia Barnes on 109-33.
Just watching, Madam Speaker. Almost there, Madam Speaker. I move that Bill Number 109-33 LS, we move to the third reading, and if I can promise to be brief on it.
You may proceed.
Madam Speaker, this bill is an act to appropriate the funds from the 2014 Hotel Occupancy Tax Surplus Fund to the Guam Visitors Bureau, and out of that, that $900,000 will be appropriated from that surplus fund to go into Guam Visitors Bureau's operational needs and for the costs associated with hosting the upcoming Pacific Asia Tour Association meeting. And I want to share with you, Madam Speaker, that I had the opportunity to hear Guam's acceptance to host the PATA meeting here on Guam. And what's important about this is, as we look at this association and what their mission mandates do is to help support touristisms around the world, this association has over 105 economies and is a very strong organization. Guam is a part, who was a founding member of this PATA association. More importantly, we also do have our Micronesian chapter, which one of our very own, Ms. Pilar Leguanyah, is the chairman, with our Micronesian tractor, with our Micronesian brothers and sisters around the islands. And I want to say that having Guam the bid to host it, they, the leaders from many, many countries will be here next year, they've set, tentatively set a scheduled date to be here right before the Festival of the Arts. They realize and are supporting our efforts in the hosting of the Festival of the Arts here for 2016, and their tentative date is set for, right before the FESPAC celebration. I want to share with you, Madam Speaker, that having put the P back in the Pacific, this would be the first time that PATA will come back to this Pacific region and have the meeting hosted here. So I was very proud, I was very honored to be a part of receiving the message that we were going to be able to host that. Guam has bid it for many years, and we just got accepted. And again, as we look at showcasing our island to the rest of the world, this is one event that will truly, truly help Guam showcase our beautiful island to the world. And I'm hoping that my colleagues will help me in this effort and support this measure.
On the motion, the main motion, Senator Spalding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. It's more of a technical correction on this bill, so bottom line, on line seven, we have Guam Visitors, that's an apostrophe S, it's really Guam Visitors without an apostrophe, Bureau. So just that technical change. And then also for PATA, it's really the Pacific Asia Travel Association, as opposed to Pacific Asia Tour Association.
Thank you.
Just want to make that clear.
Okay, so on both of those then, so ordered. Thank you very much, no objection. And I know you want to continue to speak.
Well, I just have, I guess, a query, if I may ask, the author. And I just realized, from what she just shared with us, that this meeting takes place next year, right before FESPAC, so we're talking May, I would imagine, is that kind of the month that this is going to happen? May, June?
No, it's, they want to make, they want, Madam Speaker, they want to make sure that they're here right before the Festival of the Arts, so that they can attend the Festival of the Arts.
Okay.
Yes, but usually, it happens, every year, the meeting is held in the different countries, usually between April and June, first week of June.
Okay, and I guess the question in my mind is, are we being too premature on this right now? In other words, if it's not happening until next fiscal year, why are we going down this road right now to try to use this money when there may potentially be other areas that could also use this money? We know full well that the museum down the road, you know, probably this year, if we're trying to finish the museum in time for FESPAC, that they have trying to finish the museum in time for FestPAC, that they have stated that they will be short of money. And so I need to at least question why we need to appropriate this right now, if this event is not going to be happening until next year.
Senator, you answered the question.
Yes, Madam Speaker, I will yield, Madam Speaker, yes, the urgency to make sure that the funding is in place, is there. We have been meeting with the organization, and the funding needed to, to host this meeting here on Guam. We just received, this legislature just received a courtesy visit from the executive director, Mr. Mario, I forget his last name, who, and a, and a delegation, a team who came here to do the site visits, and to make sure that the financial planning, and working closely with GBB, who would be the facilitator of this event, and showing that we did, that we have a plan, working closely with, with the Guam Visitors Bureau, and that the resources have been submitted for us to be able to host that. And when we came to visit, when they came to visit us, we were very receptive at the fact. And again, Madam Speaker, it was Guam's bid to mean request to be able to host this big event coming to Guam. And again, having over 105 economies come and, and work through this organization, and then to promote Guam to the rest of the world, so that we can look at, at having travelers come who've never heard of Guam, come and visit us, this, this is one very, very important way of doing it, and that's a part of our enabling legislation.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Spodan.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I, and I concur with the author of this legislation, and I appreciate her, her explanation. I guess we do need to make sure that we have the money, the kitty, to start preparing for this important event, or this important meeting. It is important. Not only will we have the Tour Association, Pacific Asia Tour Association here to, to meet, but also to witness the FestPAC, and to really hopefully take away from the experience of being on this island, a good, a good experience that they can share with their, with their travelers. And again, I would just question the timing of this, but sometimes I realize, sometimes you need to have the cash in, in the bank, so that you can move forward prior to the event. And I thank you for the time, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. So on the motion then to send 109 down to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. On 110, Senator, you recognize.
Madam Speaker, last bill, Bill 110-33 LS, I ask that we move it to the third reading, and I promise it to be very brief.
Okay, you may proceed, Senator.
Madam Speaker, Bill 110-33 LS is to take, out of the $3.5 million surplus, an appropriation of $1 million will go into funding the Hagatna Restoration and Redevelopment Authority for operational needs. Madam Speaker, I want to share with you that as we look at restoring our capital of Guam, our village of Hagatna, to its original glory, and as we look at the Hagatna Redevelopment and Restoration Authority having been implemented, and moving forward in refurbishing, rebuilding, and just bringing Hagatna back, our capital back, we've had many, many meetings here, and of the latest one, there was a breakdown of needs assessment, and this appropriation was requested from the Hagatna Restoration and the administration to start this project moving forward. And it was noted that they wanted to, if the million dollars was appropriated to this event, that, I mean, to this program, it would go, the recommended suggestions would work with the Hagatna River Walk Esplanade Development District project, it would look at the Paseo de Susana Plan Development District, and the Adalip Redevelopment Feasibility projects, it would look at the Hagatna River channeling and watershed hydraulic feasibility study, it would look at the reestablishment, to reestablish and market the annual events that are, that used to happen in Hagatna, which was like the May Fair, the Agriculture Exposition, and the, and other activities. It was looking at the, the GIDA, an HRA, a reimbursement to GIDA for the master plan that was dedicated for this, for Hagatna, Madam Speaker. And, and I want to share that in our efforts to bringing tourism out of just Tuman, and bringing it back to the villages, and knowing that, as former oversight chair of Hagatna Redevelopment, that this is one way of showing the support in helping the Hagatna Redevelopment Board of Directors and the agency, working closely with Mr. Joseph Cameron, who is the executive director for the Hagatna Redevelopment Restoration Authority. This was some of their, their requests needed to move forward on these projects. And I'm just asking my colleagues to help me support, bring Hagatna back to what it was, maybe not the way it exactly was during pre-war times, or, but being able to, to bring the people back, bring, bring the, the functions that used to be there. So, Madam Speaker, I hope that my colleagues give me fair consideration on this, on this Bill 110.
Senator, Mr. Vice Speaker, you recognize on the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I, I rise in vehement opposition to this appropriation. As I said, the Hotel Occupancy Surplus Fund was for the specific purpose of funding FestPAC. I could not oppose a CAT scan machine, and I did not want to oppose PATA and GBB since that is what the Hotel Occupancy Tax was supposed to be used for. But HRA has its own ability to be able to raise money. The fact that they aren't able to do it, or haven't done it, is not my concern right now. I'm concerned that we have $3.5 million. I had, and I looked at what this was planning on doing, it was five different studies, Madam Speaker. And if I'm not mistaken, it'll probably be five different task orders attached to a strange RFP that was issued by GIDA, which went to Matrix for doing the HRA plan for Hagatna, of which $150,000 of this million is to reimburse them. For some of the money that was going to be used was for the, for the River Walk, as I understand it, if I remember correctly, when we passed that legislation, for the River Walk, that there was money from USDA that was coming in. Why do we need to put money aside in this one? We're going to have $150,000 to bring a fair. Madam Speaker, to use an analogy in the family, it's like, we had spent $27 million to rebuild our house, the museum that's going up. If things work out well, it's going to be finished by the end of this year. We're already planning that we're going to have $150,000 for housewarming. We're planning for a pool for the back, and we're going to have a study to see, we're going to have a pool for the back, we're going to spend $300,000 for that, but $300,000 for another project that we're planning on doing. But we don't know if we have enough money to put a piece of furniture into the house. This money should be put into a lockbox to make sure that we have one project finished in Hagatna. Initially, I had an amendment where I was going to ask for $250,000 to do a study, and to build a fence around the Administration Building, so I could try to save it. But I fought that already, and I know the numbers, and I know I'm not going to get the numbers to support it. And if I'm opposing studies that are being done in here, then it would be hypocritical for me to want another study. But I do know that in the hot bond, that we spent $85 million in a bond, 27 of it was supposed to go to the, to the, to the, to the museum. Yes, in this $1 million appropriation, there's going to be a study of the hydrological, where all, wherever the rivers are running under the city. We didn't do it before we did the, did the museum, and consequently, we had to, we're over expended on the museum construction. As a result, we're short for the inside of the building. So, Madam Speaker, my amendment is, is going to be that a million dollars be transferred from the Hotel Occupancy Tax Surplus Fund to the Guam Museum Fund, and hereby appropriated from the Guam Museum Fund to the Department of Chamora Affairs for the sole purpose of funding Guam Museum capital expenditures, equipment, and/or supplies.
On the amendment.
I just want to make sure that there's something in that, one thing in Hagatna that's going to be finished. Yes, we're going to demolish, you know, I hope it doesn't happen, but we're going to demolish the Hagatna, the Administration Building. We're not going to have anything up by the time FestPAC comes, but please, please make sure that the $27 million investment we've made in the museum has something in it, so that when we have these tens of thousands of people coming for the FestPAC, that they have a museum that we can be proud of. Not an empty shell, but a museum with artifacts and display cabinets, everything else that is necessary to make sure that one, one project is going to be finished. I thankfully saw that the wall, that they, that they finally put up the barricades around the old Congress Building. I'm praying to God that by, by the time FestPAC opens next year, I mean, comes here next, next June, that that, that barrier is going to be down, and will be in our building. But the way construction goes on this island, I doubt it. So please, make sure we have one thing that we can showcase, the museum that we, we spent at least $27 million, and I'm asking that we, we save this what lasts, $1 million, for the capital expenditures, and for the, whatever it needs to make sure that it's, it's, it's operational when we finish. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Vice Speaker. On the amendment.
And I am sorry, I just pointed out, appropriations in this section shall not lapse, and shall continue to be available until fully expended for the purposes of the area. I have it here, Madam Speaker.
Okay, thank you.
But it's for the museum, that's all I'm asking.
Okay. All right, I'm going to take your brief recess. The legislature is back in session. Senator Respecho on the amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker and colleagues. Madam Speaker, Bill 110-33 is a genesis of an original bill that the sponsors introduced, that was found in Bill 83-33, and it went through the public hearing, it went through the legislative process, and as a result, it's being separated out for statutory reasons that it cannot be multiple appropriations. So in this process, the Hagatna Redevelopment and Restoration Authority submitted written testimony in support of this $1 million appropriation. I certainly understand the comments of the previous speaker, I understand the genesis for the amendment, that it be moved instead to the Guam Museum, but what I can't understand is why there wouldn't be a recognition that this Hagatna Redevelopment and Restoration Authority is tasked with moving forward the development of our capital city of Hagatna. As you know, I'm a member of the Hagatna Redevelopment and Restoration Authority, and, and for years, this authority has been at a standstill, simply because of the lack of funding, in order to update the plan, in order to drive this whole idea forward, in order to make this city of Hagatna not only economically self-sustaining, but revenue generating. We talk about using the tourist attraction fund money, which we know comes from the hotel occupancy taxes, we talk about how this money needs to be used, so that we can continue to attract tourists to come to our island. Simply put, it's one of the reasons why the legislature, through majority, at the support and drive of the administration, moved to resolve the issue of the Manuel Guerrero Building, simply because we have to move forward with the development of the plans to revitalize Hagatna. During that whole debate, Madam Speaker, certainly the argument was made that there was a hot bond that was floated to build a museum, and that because of cost overruns, because of the need for more funding to include the operational needs of the Guam Museum, there was a strong movement, and I didn't oppose, to just deleting that as a funding source, so that that money that was going to be used from the, from the hot bond that we floated, to this, resolve the, the situation of the former DOA building, or the Guerrero Building, that funding source was removed, because the idea was that $600,000 that would have been used to demolish the DOA building should instead go to the operations of the Guam Museum. So that was done, and then now we have another attempt to say, take the million dollars, because I don't like how this money is going to be used for another plan, another study, and then just throw it over to the museum? Well, just how much does the Guam Museum need? Certainly, we're hearing that they are in need of money for operations, but I thought that this body addressed that by removing the funding source on a bill that was introduced to demolish the Guerrero Building. Now that that funding source was removed, now there's another attempt to, to take this $1 million funding source that's supposed to go, that should go, Madam Speaker and colleagues, to continue the effort to revitalize Hagatna by providing a funding source for the operational needs of this authority. Yeah, the statement that this authority could be self-financing, and we also know that the, that the law for requiring the property taxes in Hagatna go to this authority. But we also know, Madam Speaker and colleagues, that the property taxes go to fund the Territorial Education Facilities Fund, which funds the Department of Education in some part. So there was a bill by our colleague that will, will clarify and take all the property taxes generated in Hagatna, and give it to the Hagatna Redevelopment and Restoration Authority, so that they can have some kind of funding stream. But I was one of those senators that opposed that bill, Madam Speaker, simply because we cannot take away from education. And so that bill was one vote short of passing, and so now we're in a situation where there's a bill that was introduced that would, that would set aside $1 million from this hotel occupancy funds, or the tourist attraction fund, and really put it where it needs to be with respect to what's being outlined in Bill 110. We have this letter from the Hagatna Redevelopment and Restoration Authority that starts off by calling for $300,000 for the Hagatna River Channeling and Watershed Hydrological Feasibility Study, and this is a Water Resources Authorization and Development Act requirement estimated at $1.2 million for the study completion with Guam's share at 50%. And this comprehensive study is to determine the BMP and the COA in the Hagatna watershed. Then they proceed to justify how this remaining balance is to be spent. $200,000 for the Hagatna River Walk development, $200,000 for the Paseo de Susana Plan Development District, $150,000 to reestablish and market the annual events in Hagatna. This, this idea here is to reestablish- This idea here is to reestablish the May Fair, the agricultural expositions, the fiestas, you know, and then they also have $150,000 to reimburse GIDA, and this, then they did borrow money from the Guam Economic Development Authority so they can have some kind of operational funding so that they can bring these plans off the shelf, dust it, and move it forward. You know, I, I'm thinking, Madam Speaker, that instead of just arbitrarily taking the $1 million and giving it to another need, which we're not very clear what that final need is, I know that the first appropriation of $300,000 is absolutely necessary. I want to have an opportunity to go back to the Hagania Redevelopment and Restoration Authority, and maybe we can delineate, then whatever is absolutely necessary now, if it's the $300,000, let's appropriate the $300,000, and then let's provide for an authorization for the remaining balance subject to legislative appropriation, so then we'll have an opportunity to not only hear from the Hagania Redevelopment and Restoration Authority with respect to the remaining balance, but we may also have an opportunity to provide some legislative remedy for the Guam Museum, and if that $700,000 can be used for the Guam Museum, I, maybe that's, maybe that's what we can do, instead of just taking, seeing, oh, there's a million here, let's just give it to the Guam Museum. Well, how much does Guam Museum need? I don't know. Well, didn't we take care of the Guam Museum's needs by removing the funding source from the Hotel Occupancy Tax Bond that we floated that was going to be used for another purpose? We removed that, isn't that money available? And this is all one in the same. The same individual who signed this letter, supporting Bill 83 dash 33, is the same individual responsible for the Guam Museum. So I, I don't think there are competing interests here, and there shouldn't be. But I think that we should take a moment here to see what exactly is it of the million-dollar appropriation they need right now. The Chairman of the Hagania Redevelopment and Restoration Authority has communicated that the $300,000 is absolutely necessary, and then we can set the $700,000 aside by way of an authorization and come back through the legislative process and, and make that subject to legislative appropriation. So I stand in opposition to the amendment as being presented, and I wanted to share my thoughts with respect to what other means can be brought forward as a means to compromise. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, Senator McCready?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of the previous speaker's compromise. You know, we, as he said, that it's been communicated that the number one priority right now is to get the Hagania River channeling and the watershed, which is anywhere from, and it's not really clear on it being $300,000, it's anywhere from $270,000 to $300,000. So there is, there is some priorities that we have to address, but the main priority is, is that one. And we, we're not sure, I mean, we've spent, I think, $8 million in the last 30 minutes, if you add this million dollars, approximately $8 million if you add this million dollars. And I think it would only be responsible of us to prioritize what has, what has been stated is a priority, and to, to keep that money as some kind of a seed money. I mean, we can police ourselves here. And, and, you know, it, it's not as if we need to spend the money right away. As the previous speaker said, these, these monies are going for good, good projects. But do we want to spend it all today? Do we have to spend it all today? And if we do have to spend it all today because there's some time constraints, then I understand that. But if we don't, then let's, let's give it a priority, and let's see what happens. And we still have $700,000 or even more in the bank. So, you know, I rise in support of, of the previous speaker's comments and his, his proposed compromise. Thank you.
Okay. Well, you're supposed to speak on the amendment, not, not what somebody was suggesting, so. So we're going to take, okay. Senators, Paul Donahue?
Madam Speaker, in light of the discussion that has happened thus far, I think it's only in order that we do take a recess so that we can perhaps figure out if there is a compromise in terms of the exact figure that we could use.
Okay, wait, one second. The mover of the amendment, Vice Speaker, is going to speak. Mr. Vice Speaker? Mr. Vice Speaker? You want to recess? We're going to recess. The legislature's back in session. Mr. Vice Speaker, on your amendment.
Madam Speaker, as much as it pains me, I'd like to withdraw my amendment and just have $300,000 go to the channeling and watershed hydrological feasibility study that's being done by the USACE Honolulu District. I think that's Army Corps of Engineers.
Under motion to withdraw this amendment, no objections, so ordered. On the new amendment then is to $300,000 for the Hagania River channeling and watershed hydrological feasibility study.
For the, for the purpose of providing the Guam portion of the, the deal with US Army Corps of Engineers. The other four projects, Madam Speaker, sound good as a name, but it just has studies, and I don't, I don't, I really don't think we need any more studies. We need to save that money in the event that we need it for something else. So the $300,000, I understand, is needed by the, by the Army Corps to move forward with their study, and we just leave it at that.
Okay. On the amendment, Senator Respecho?
Just for the record, Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the amendment offered by our Vice Speaker and say that it's extremely reasonable, and it also means that the balance of the $700,000 could be decided by the legislature after we hear from the, more from the authority, or after we hear from the museum, or, or after we reconcile those different interests so that it does not provide for a situation where it's competing interests. All of these interests, as I stated, is one in the same. And so I appreciate the amendment made by the Vice Speaker. Not only is he being reasonable about it, but he's certainly being realistic with respect to the situation before all of us. So I rise in support of the amendment.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak on the amendment? On the motion, on the amendment, no objections to it? So ordered. Senator Winia Barnes, you want to send it down, or you want to speak?
Madam Speaker, I'd just add that Vice Speaker Cruz and Senator Respecho be added to the, to the cosponsorship, and then move it down to, oh, no, okay. Senator Respecho?
Yes.
On that amendment, no objections, so ordered. On the motion to send 110 dash 33 to the third reading, file without any objections, so ordered.